From Orchard that wants to address us, now would be the time. Just if you'll just come up, give us your name, your address, and kind of an overview of what the issue is, has been for you.
Says push. Oh, there it goes. So, my name is TJ Milliken. I live at 9426 Peachtree Lane. So, I'm about the third house on the northeast corner that runs back line to the wooded area. I basically bought that house in 2010, so I'm the supervisor. I've always lived in this house and everything else. But basically, ever since the Middel Schools started converting all their fields to turf, we began a lot of major runoff water. If you pull up Google Maps on that side area, when Home Creations went in and built the property, on the east side of the easements of the Orchard, they actually put in a concrete drain system. Well, it all routed to the southeast corner of that neighborhood. Well, on that backside where I live, which is Orchard, there is no drainage at all. So, what they done is they scalped it. And when they went scout the property, they butted the fence up to where they finished the property line and never put in any type of retention or concrete to help take that water running out the backside to go west back toward Douglas where the creek is. Now, since 2008, I guess at the time when the schools, Middel Schools, had the property, they brought in about two to three-foot bowlers to help build a residual pool pond for the water to go to and retain and slowly bleed off. It just made it worse. Like I've mentioned, in that whole backline since 2010, we've had three houses that's been flooded in that area where the families have actually vacated their houses and left. We just are military members that usually live in this neighborhood. And I've already put $5,000 into my property back there. I've built a retaining wall on my own dime. I brought in three truckloads of dirt. And with all this receding water, I've had engineers come out, look at my area, because in my main backyard, I have a sewer system line that runs through the middle of my property. So, I have an easement by the city that I cannot touch that due to the sewer line running. But now, I'm having my backyard actually start sinking. So, with that being said, I've had all your engineers come out. I have had city, had stormwater. They've come out looked, and they said, "Yeah, your backyard's sinking, but it's not our issue. It's your issue." And they know that stormwater's running off. This dirt, they just don't know where it's going. They've done dye testing on the system to make sure that the sewer concrete lines were not cracked or it was eroding. They go down to the end and toward Douglas, about 10 houses down, and they're like, "Hey, we don't have any dye. We don't know where it's going." So, if this easement is approved, where you guys can go back in and they put in concrete, then I will go back and spend another $2,000 to bring dirt to level it up. But I don't want to do it, because I'm just going to keep pouring dirt wherever it's Just this recent storm about four months ago, it's at 9428, no, 9430, that house actually flooded. So, each year, the route takes a different route every time. Everybody in the neighborhood's provided a lot of videos since 2013. I've even spoke with the land development community when they came out and looked at it. I've actually tried to fight Home Creations with their lawyers. They just kept prolonging it out, like, "Hey, it's not our issue. You've owned the property. The city approved the way we did the runoff." So, we're just at a standstill, but I'm telling you right now, you're losing a lot of your military personnel that are buying those houses back there. They're vacating, and they're going straight east to Chalk Hall and Shawnee area. So, I don't know if you guys have been back there recently, but there's now eight houses that are up for sale. So, we're losing military personnel. I'm still in the military. I'm a reservist. I'm a sheriff, and I work out of Tinker. So, it's the reason why I picked that spot.
Is there anybody else from Orchard that wants to? Mr. Mayor and other members of this committee, there's a memo that I sent to the mayor and Mr. Henson last month that addresses several of the concerns which led to this request. There are, however, a few issues I'd like to expound on. In 1990, Orchard II addition was brought in front of the council to approve as a housing addition on 38 acres. From what I've found out from reviewing staff reports that were made in 1990 and from talking to the staff who were here at the time and remember it, there were concerns when the addition was being built about stormwater runoff. In the section of the report that the council saw under the heading of Drainage and Flood Control, Wetlands and Sediment Control, it states, quote, "All portions of the preliminary plat area drain via sheet flow to the southwest corner of the preliminary plat and into the regulatory floodplain of the Soldier Creek." The Soldier Creek floodplain is located on the southwest corner of this addition. In the second section of the same staff reports, it states, "The 72-inch RCP, which is a reinforced concrete pipe, is located at the southeast corner of the Orchard addition to provide downstream improvements to the regulatory floodway of Soldier Creek." I can't say whether that pipe is there, but the one thing I can say for sure is the water, it doesn't appear that there have been anything done to get the water from the southeast corner, which Mr. Milliken's talking about, of the addition to the southwest corner and onto Soldier Creek. One thing that was done was a north-south drainage, which he mentioned, flume, and it's in the report that you got from Billy, was put in on the east side of the addition on city property. And there's a copy of that, and it's on page three of Mr. Harlow's report. This became more of an issue after May 1997, when the city municipal authority purchased the land from the Middel School System to build the Reed Baseball Complex. I've been told by residents the issue with their property being flooded has been going on for several years, and the city was aware of it. In the memo I sent to the city manager and the mayor, I provided some of the information in an email from the General Counsel of Home Creations dated June 25, 2013. In that email, the General Counsel noted he contacted the city of Midwest City early in June 2013, and there was a meeting with the development official for the city on June 24, 2013. In this email, the General Counsel stated that, quote, "At our meeting with city personnel yesterday, we have requested and received a commitment from the city to contact the school's property management official as well as the owner of the adjacent parcel. Working in conjunction with the various parties, we expect that an agreeable solution can be worked out soon to resolve the water damage issue," or the water drainage issue. And that was in 2013. From what I've learned, it doesn't appear much was done after that initial meeting. In another email from city staff to homeowners dated June 3, 2015, it stated, "The city will be reaching out to the owner to the south in hopes of finding a solution." That's a quote. Again, there was no information that anything was done with that. Another email was sent on August 25, 2015, from city staff to five property owners related to the water issue. In that email, city staff stated, I quote, "We hope to have some detention constructed downstream of the baseball facility." The staff also wrote, I quote, "In the meantime, I would encourage you and your neighbors to look at fortifying your fence lined with landscaping." I provided emails written on April 24, 2016, to Mayor Dukes related to this issue. In the email, it states approximately six months prior to the emails, the city engineer was sent all the pictures the homeowners had, and there was a meeting with the engineer and several residents. In the same email string, it states that that was going on, there was going to be a town hall meeting in September 13, 2016. As a result of that town hall meeting, the city did go in and put in a detention area east of the Orchards and on city property. The detention pond was intended to help with the water runoff that is still coming off city property at the Reed Baseball Complex and the sports fields to include the Carl Albert Football Field Stadium. The Reed Baseball Complex has four fields that are sloped for the water to run off to the south, which then runs west to the Orchard addition. One concern that has come up recently is when those fields are renovated with funds from the bond issued with AstroTurf, there will be more runoff coming directly at the Orchard addition. Along with the increase from city-owned ballfields with the construction work being done at Carl Albert Football Stadium and additional paved parking lots, there will be an increase of stormwater runoff coming from this area, which will end up in the southeast corner of Orchard addition. You add the water from the drainage flume Mr. Harlow mentions, along with the water coming from the baseball complex and the football stadium, it all goes to the same location, the southeast corner of the Orchard addition. Which brings me why I'm bringing this up. When Orchard addition was developed, nothing was done to get the water from this area to the southwest corner of the addition into Soldier Creek. No drainage system was put in, no flume, anything, or nothing. What has happened is the water runs into the yards of the residents. As a result of several inquiries I made about this, several members of the city staff met with Mr. Milliken, who lives at 9426 on Peachtree. According to Mr. Milliken, he purchased the house in 2010, and since 2013, he's had issues with his backyard dropping, which is what he tested to. He has a two-foot by two-foot sinkhole next to the sewer main. When the city staff met with Mr. Milliken, I received an email from Mr. Streets, who's Assistant Public Works Director. He stated, "The source of this problem appears to be water draining from a flume that runs south behind the houses on the east side of Apple and then turns west along the backyard, back of the houses on the south side of Peachtree. The water drains west, does not have, the water draining west does not have improved drainage structure to carry it and drains across private property." He believes that any solution to this problem will need to be engineered, and it is likely to be costly. From what I've learned, the explanation given to the residents in 2013, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Milliken, in why nothing could be done to fix the problem is because the property owner directly south of the addition lived out of state, and they couldn't get an easement. And I think that's what was relayed to you also, Mr. Mayor, and you in the meeting that we had. When I first inquired about this issue, I was told the same thing. It was an out-of-town owner. I then discovered by checking Oklahoma County assessors that the property was now owned by a local developer. I've been told now that the city has met with this developer and is working towards obtaining an easement to correct the problem. The important thing to remember in this issue is the vast majority of water that is draining into this neighborhood is coming off of Midwest City-owned property. I don't dispute the pictures provided with the report on the backside for the fences. The area around the fences have eroded, and the retaining walls some of the residents have put in have started to fall apart. However, you need to keep in mind that several of these properties have received serious property damage. Mr. Milliken brought that up. How many times would you be willing to replace a fence or retaining wall knowing it's going to be damaged by excessive water flow? The other issue is the maintenance of the detention pond. Until last week, I believe the city staff, as I was, was under the impression this was supposed to be maintained by an HOA. I was informed there isn't an HOA, so nothing has been done to maintain that. I provided you a copy of some of the pictures, and I also would like for you to look at a couple of videos that I personally took of the storm that he's talking about that happened in December, and it's the last two slides on the PowerPoint. That's one of them right there. If you hit that at the bottom. Well, just flip to the next slide. And this is the front yard. The next slide, that's the side yard, and that's running, that's running water coming from the backside of their property, and it's running all the way. If you can see the slide, it runs all the way up to the house. Is that an accurate depiction of what?
Yeah, like I said, each, like.
Why don't you come up, come up to this?
Especially with the rains that are coming here in the next two weeks. It might be another house right up the road. We don't know. It's never the same path. I mean, we all know hydraulics, it works differently every time. So, neighbors have fought and fought to burn up their back walls, but now even the retaining walls are blown out. I mean, it's just, there's no easy path for the water, except through wherever it wants to go.
And I understand that there's some discussion, and I respect the opinion that people are not going to want to put municipal or city money onto private property. And I understand that. But the majority of water that's affecting these neighbors and these houses is water coming off of our property, and somehow we, and I'm not an engineer, I don't know the best way to fix it, but we can't continue to ask our residents to live like this, knowing that it's our water. And it's, and they've been coming, the emails, it's not, it's not, you can't dispute them. They've been bringing it to us for going on six or seven years now.
There are a couple of solutions that we've been looking at. Probably the first solution that would be relatively easy to pursue would be on the, I'm going to say, the first aerial after, at the end of Patrick's staff report, there's an aerial of the Orchard addition and the general area. To the east is a, is the city-owned property, and there is a small concrete drainage channel that was installed, I guess, by the developer originally.
Yes.
And to pick up the water that's coming off from the Carl Albert area. That channel is, is just not big enough to handle it, and it gets overwhelmed. And so, we can put a six-inch curb on that, on the western side of the flume, which will keep, you know, with raining, with rains, you never know whether it's ever big enough. But that would, we believe, would capture a lot of the water, which is flowing from east to west. Now, that's going to put, what that will do, though, is obviously put additional water to the south, because instead of it going from east to west, it'll be captured in the drainage channel and flow to the south. Mr. Milliken, I believe, lives on Peachtree, do you not?
Yes, sir.
And so, the challenge, big challenge here is, is that all this water comes down to the southeast corner of the Orchard addition, and there's no defined drainage channel other than running kind of along the back property lines. It just meanders along the back property lines. And so, it has to eventually, you know, sheet flow and get over into Soldier Creek. And so, what we really need to do is to be able to get some survey information and figure out what is going to be the best solution to get the water out from the, at the southeast corner of the Orchard addition and run it over to the, over into the Soldier Creek drainage channel. And so, what we had recommended or suggested was that we go ahead and include in the budget for next year some money to do that survey and at least get that process started. And that would be on the south side of the Orchard addition. But actions that you're all's discretion.
Can I say a couple of things? I spent several hours over there over the weekend, and it looked to me like everything's fine for the most part till it hits the southeast corner, and then it's running due west. And I think the video that he was trying to show, it looks like it goes from there and it even goes, travels back into the street. Am I, is that right?
Yes, sir, it does. Because they, when Orchard went through and scouted that area, they put three-foot an easement out toward the property. So, when they scalped it, you have all that smooth soil and clay, but they never built anything up. Like, if they even poured concrete, it would've gave that access to run. They didn't. They just left straight clay there. Now, my foot is literally two-foot off the property that they scouted. So, the water's taking that route and just going, and going under the fences, cutting back, and, you know, from east to west, it's just a no, getting downhill slope back toward Douglas.
Well, my point on that is, I mean, hindsight, it looks like if they would've raised the development up a little bit, but part of it I don't understand in talking to city planners and, you know, the key is to build retention-detention ponds. The answer is not to just build a bunch of channels and let it go at a fast rate, because if you do that over and over, it's going to create bigger problems downstream. But in this situation, I think with rains coming in, if we could get permission from the property owner to the south, but I've walked all the way through the brush, and you can see where beavers come in, and they, I mean, their nature is to take a dry creek and try to build and dam it up. They just do that. And they have built up some beaver dams downstream, and temporarily, while we're waiting on the survey, if we could get permission and have permission for the city to enter that property and at least clean that channel out, I think we'll see that that water will find its way towards the southwest rather than back through these yards.
My question is, what happens to the detention pond that the HOA supposedly had control over? Now, there's no HOA, so how are we going to get it cleaned out?
Well, what I was told was that the original intent was to have an HOA, but it was never forged.
Dude, I'm confused on the rate, on where that pond is, the HOA pond.
It's going to be at the southwest corner of the Orchard addition. If you look on that aerial, Billy, can you? Okay.
And if you go on the county tax rolls, it's, it's a sliver of land that, it's not very big.
Was it ever put in?
Yeah, it's in there.
But going back to the, how come all that property, I think there's close to 60 acres, has never had any detention or retention?
It's never, it's never been developed as far as the raw land that's been dammed up by the beavers and surrounding properties or illegal dumping.
No, the ballfields, the area where part of, I don't know where the break is, but somewhere around the football field, maybe the east side of the football field, the east side of the football field runs east, and everything else runs west. So, I mean, you have probably close to 40 to 60 acres of drainage that doesn't have any detention whatsoever.
What? Well, that's, Councilman Moore, that's why in, I guess it was 2015, that detention, there was a detention structure that was installed at the southwest corner of that, of the Carl Albert city property.
What are the immediate actions we need to take? We can't expect these folks to continue to live like this. I mean, I've seen the video. You guys seen the pictures. Regardless of whoever's fault it is, we need to correct it. And so, my question to you, Patrick, what are the immediate steps we need to take to try to alleviate some of it? And I get the long-term effects that we're going to have to spend some money to put some drainage back there. So, what can we do right now?
Yes, sir. Immediately, if we could get access to the property and go in and do some of the cleanup that Mr. Moore is talking about, we can alleviate that corner area that's right now the biggest culprit in backing water into the properties. And then, short-term, what we'll do is, with your permission, move forward, get survey along that south property line, so we can game plan a permanent solution, so water can be conveyed from the east to the west down to the creek, and it'll stop impacting the neighborhood.
Do we know who the property owner is that we need to get permission to go into?
Yeah, it's Jeff Johnson.
And I visit with him, and he is, under certain circumstances, will.
So, the two things we need to do right now is to clean that area up back there to facilitate the flow of water. Now, who owns the detention pond now, since the HOA doesn't exist?
It's actually owned by a private individual somewhere in the metropolitan area, I believe.
Yeah, Forest Park, I believe.
It was probably the, you know, it was a separate lot, and the taxes were probably never paid on it, and then it was put up for sale and by the county.
Can we contact him and get permission to go in there and clean that out, or force him to clean it out?
We believe that there's probably some authority to do that. Yes, sir.
So, we need to clean the backside of that lot out, get the detention pond cleaned out, and then engineer it way forward to alleviate that neighborhood from being washed down the street.
I have a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I can wrap this all up in one big package.
Okay.
First off, with regard to discussion item B1, I would move to approve discussion item B1, subject to available funding, noting that it is not meant to be an admission of liability on the part of the city, but rather in recognition of the circumstances that these folks have been dealt and the conditions that they're having to live with at this time. I would also move that staff be directed by our city manager to proceed, as we've discussed, with an appropriate undertaking of the study of the water flow and where the concentration needs to be, if the detention pond can be addressed, and that may be for legal counsel also. I'm seeing Heather somewhere out there. And to take as much immediate action as we can to alleviate this egregious situation as soon as we can for these folks.
I. I'll second that.
Can I have a little bit of further discussion? I mean, I know we got to do something. I would really like to see some more study before we automatically, say, build a channel. I mean, in my mind, you need to retain the water, or you're just putting your problem down, downstream.
It's a very valid point, Councilman Moore. But we really can't move forward until we have some type of idea of what the terrain is, how we can deal with it. Because the survey area shows that a channel improvement would go through that area, that by no means would be the only thing that we would look at doing. It would be, I foresee a multifaceted improvement. Excuse me. So, it's a very valid point, sir.
And Councilman Moore, I agree, and that was, I think, wrapped in my motion list, I hope it was. I got a little wordy on that in the end, but that the appropriate engineering be undertaken before this course of work is done, and we determine immediately what the flow of the water is and where the concentration needs to be had. And if it, some of this can be addressed with cleaning out the channel and cleaning out the detention pond, it can actually flow to the detention pond, depending if those issues can be resolved or not, perhaps that will assist us in determining where our real scope of work needs to be. But I don't think that unless we give them some kind of approval to be moving towards, subject to funding, that we're going to get any action taken on this project, is my concern. So, that's the reason why I'm a motion. If you have a better idea, by all means, I.
I think the same motion, but not necessarily say that we're going to build a channel along the south edge, but look at the study and decide which direction to go, whether it's addressed with detention.
Are you asking for that to be done by city engineering staff or outside engineering staff?
Whoever's going to study it, whoever you recommend studying it.
Who are you looking to, are you hiring outside to come in and do the survey?
Yes, we will have a company come in and do the survey work. This initial phase of the project is the survey, it's not a total design. We will get a survey, so we'll have some accurate information to research, and then we'll be able to bring an accurate design towards, or to the commission, and then proceed from there.
So, does everybody understand the motion that was made?
And just to clear that up, we may, we may request to go outside for engineering on that, depending on what some of the survey.
Understood.
City attorney wants to address the CIP.
We've now moved off of what the actual discussion item is. Do you want to do no action and request the staff to do the additional steps you all have discussed?
Well, I think that what the motion was is consistent with the agenda item. I'm perfectly comfortable with them just giving some authorization to move forward.
Let me say, leave for the discussion.
How quickly can you guys get that easement? I mean, if you talk to Mr. Johnson, and that seems like a pretty quick fix to get some of that creek cleaned out. It's just, well, it's brush and trash, just right there is the reason it's giving them trouble.
I have talked with him about it, and he has some, some conditions on it, and if we can, if we can meet those conditions, then yes, we can move somewhat fairly quick on it.
What are the conditions? Can you disclose that?
Well, he's tied to the width. The width of it is one of the conditions, but, and that's easy to do. But he's also tying it to some other properties that he wants to swap out with some easements and some other property.
So, we're going to horse-trade easements, basically, to get access? Is that what you're telling me?
You know.
And, and, and real estate.
And I think, I think we would probably want to try to approach this in a two-step manner. Jeff, I think what you're talking about is trying to get an immediate, some immediate returns. returns, so to speak, and what I think Billy is talking about is, is what Mr. Johnson's looking at long-term. He doesn't want a big drainage channel running across his property that adversely affects the value of the property.
Okay, and I can understand a restriction as to width, but this idea that we need to engage in swapping out easements and swapping out other parts of the property? I mean, we're beyond scope here in my mind. So if that means that we need legal counsel to take a look at the issue and figure out how we can get access in order to deal with this drainage, and if any of this runoff is coming from his property and we need to address that issue, then that's what we need to do.
Well, I agree with you, but when he got his lot split to do the bank and Sonic and a cul-de-sac is when the city should've said, "We'll approve this," because this has happened to me before. "We're gonna approve this, but we want a channel." So they didn't do that.
But we've gone pretty far afield here. The motion has nothing to do with the second portion of it. We need to authorize them.
Except that I'm about to withdraw the motion based upon the other information because I'm asking for city staff to proceed as directed to take immediate action and part of that immediate action is dealing with trying to clean out that channel. And if cleaning out that channel means we have to go through an elaborate horse trading scheme with Mr. Johnson on this issue, then we have a problem in my mind.
There's a difference in cleaning the channel out and actually going in and putting a actual concrete channel through there, is that correct?
Well, we can't go in there without an easement or a temporary easement and, and Councilperson Eads, I don't mean to misspeak and that's why I was hesitant to say something. What he's offering is not necessarily a big, a big deal, what he would like to do. It's just that, hey, while we're doing this, can we clear up some other things on, on easements and some other properties in order for, for, to move forward with it? So we just haven't had, this was last week and we haven't had a chance to sit down and evaluate the properties and look at the easement widths and all of those things.
But the immediate action that where Councilwoman Eads had suggested, be going and get a temporary easement and go in there and clean that sucker out, and then we can discuss swap outs and all the legalities when we get a permanent solution.
You know, I had another...
I need to withdraw a motion.
If you seriously go down and look at that, the reason those properties are getting flooded is because he's got blockage on his property downstream, on his property, it's damming it up and it's shooting it across. So I would think he oughta be more than happy to even maybe go clean it out himself. But, you know, talking about all the swap outs and stuff, I'd like to talk about that at a later time.
I agree.
It's blockage, his property's damming up the property. Yes, the water's coming from the schools, but his property is what's blocked up.
Okay, we do have a motion and the motion is giving, giving some go-ahead to get this...
But I'm revising the motion as to the issue with the easements type of thing because...
Is he willing to give us a temporary easement, go in there and clean that out?
I think so. We talked, we discussed it and I, just let, we can, we can go take care of it. I don't...
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I already have a second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll call for a vote. Roll call vote, please, Ms... Well, we're one.
Aye, as stated.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. Thank you, Judge. And Mr. Grau? Thank you. All right, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Mr. Milken. When your group approached us two years ago about getting a stoplight at Orchard and Douglas, I made this comment then and I'll make it again. The wheels of government have a tendency to move slow, but they do move. Tonight, you've seen, and Councilman Burns needs to be congratulated on the yeoman's work that he's done on bringing this to, to, to the council and to, to the committee to get this going forward. It's gonna be a process and it's not gonna happen overnight. Just as the street light, we just got funding for it, it should be going in within the next year. It's taken three years to get done. But your government is listening and we're taking action, so rest assured of that and please pass that on to the folks that are your neighbors and we'll continue to work. But we are listening and we will do the best of our ability to get it corrected. Okay?
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I appreciate it to the city members as well. Like I said, it's a pretty big battle and I get called there many a times with county with the recs.
Sorry it's taking this long.
It's a process. I work out with the government, so I understand.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if there's no further discussion for the committee, we are hereby adjourned. And just, I need to take a minute and go back and talk to somebody and we'll come back. May I call to order the Midwest City Council? I'd ask the Honorable Vaughn Sullivan to lead us in the invocation. Also, we have two Carl Albert seniors with us tonight to lead us in the pledge, Cadet Eckhart and Cadet Cartwright. Cadet Eckhart plans to go to Rose State after he graduates for two years, then he'll decide what to do with the rest of his life. And Cadet Cartwright is planning to go into nursing after graduation. So that being said, please stand and go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
Father God, we thank you so much for the blessing of this day. Father, we thank you for the occasion of this council meeting, Lord, and we give you glory and honor for the freedom that we have to assemble tonight and conduct the business of this city. Father, we thank you so much for these men and women, Lord, their willingness to serve in this capacity. Father, we thank you for the dedication and the sacrifice by not only them, but their families as well. Father, we thank you for this great city that we enjoy living and working and playing in. Father, we thank you for the men and women who serve this community in a professional way daily and their dedication and their hard work that make this a great place. Father, we ask that you be with the men and women of this, the armed forces of this nation who are all over the world tonight, ensuring that we're free to meet. Father, we ask your blessing of protection and peace be upon them. Father, mostly we, we thank you for the ultimate freedom that we enjoy through your son, Jesus Christ, and his blood that was shed on our behalf. Father, remind us daily of how privileged we are and how loved we are. And we ask this in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we didn't even get to touch on community-related announcements. We've got a lot going on coming up. We'll go around the horseshoe.
For the benefit of one of our teachers from Monrooney Middle School who's been suffering with health issues, and that continues on until 7:30 this evening. So if you're finished with this meeting, please run over there, there's gonna be food trucks, et cetera. And then I would give a shout-out also to the Covered in Color Art Festival, which is April 13th. I have it from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Vaughn. I don't know that that's the exact correct time, but that's what's in my calendar.
Let me check the website.
And so also that afternoon at 3:00 o'clock is the OU Red and White Game, so you can go to Covered in Color and then you can head out to the Red and White Game and you'll make it in plenty of time. So that's all I have.
I'd like to mention that pool passes are on sale now. Also, you can, your private pool rental reservations are on sale now and birthday party pavilion reservations are on sale now.
Anybody else?
We've got the Council of Presidents coming up this, on March 30th here in Midwest City and hopefully everyone in the neighborhoods are invited to come out. We have a lot of information for you, so please come out and join us. It's gonna be at the Charles Johnson Neighborhood Initiative Building off of 15th Street.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more also. I noted that the Taste of Midwest City is happening on April 22nd. Tickets are on sale now. It's from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. and I believe the tickets are $25, if I'm not mistaken. And I received some really good news today from Mr. Coleman sitting out in the audience that my personal favorite, Fuzzy's Tacos, has signed up to be at the Taste and so something for everybody to look forward to.
Great. Anything else? Anything else for the good of the order? That being said, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all the council members or members of the audience wishing to discuss, none be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? The motion carries. Okay, we'll get to that in a minute.
The first discussion item is public hearing with discussion consideration of an appeal of the notice and order for living in a recreational vehicle filed by the owner of the property located at 9605 East Main Street. Mr. Stroh? You can step up there as well, sir. But let, let, let's let Mr. Stroh say a few words first, okay? Let's let Mr. Stroh...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Stanford was given notice on February 15th that he needed to disconnect the utilities that are hooked up to the RV and that no one is allowed to live in that RV on his property. He, as you guys got the letter from him on the appeal, he's trying to help some people in need and so I told him that on our side, there's nothing can do. He can appeal every notice we give by coming in front of the council, but that ours, we felt, was very cut and dry. I gave you guys everything that I also gave Mr. Stanford, including the ordinance and pictures. He was a very nice gentleman. He's led us on the property numerous times to check situation and conditions and we went out today and looked and they are, as I told him last council meeting, he has a stay on the notice until after this meeting to determine what the status is and so the conditions are as they were in your original packet.
Yes, sir. All righty. The people that are staying in it are homeless. Name and address and then, and then... Forrest Glen Stanford, 9605 East Main, okay? Couple miles down the road. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Stanford. People that are staying in it is a man and woman homeless and I'm helping them out. They are remodeling it while they're staying in it, okay? So I did not know that it would be, it would bother anyone, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we live off the road, north, about two blocks north of Reno, so far as people seeing an ISO or whatever, they, you know, they can't, you know? So I didn't know, now if I can't have them living in it, then what? Could I have a portable building or something for a extra bedroom or what? So I don't know.
Well, first off, this has nothing to do, it really doesn't have anything to do so much with what it looks like. It's the safety. I've seen the pictures.
Yeah.
I mean, this doesn't, if you wanna help this homeless couple, give them the money and take them down to the shelter. Because if they're, if this thing catches on fire, which is likely, you know, you're gonna have a mess on your hands. And besides that, we don't allow that by ordinance. I mean, that's just...
Well, that's another thing I don't understand is 'cause, you know, it's your property, but yet we can't have certain things.
Well, when we live in the neighborhood, we have an obligation to everybody else to ensure that the safety and welfare of the rest of the neighborhood is maintained. That's why we have code ordinances and police cars and everything else.
I understand that. How about if I get my neighbors to sign a petition saying it's okay with them?
It's still not, it's still against Midwest City ordinance. You can sign all the petitions you want, it's still against ordinance, it's gonna have... It's still against ordinance, it's going to have to be moved. There's not, there's no way around this one.
Okay, now, could I put a portable building up?
As long as you get a permit, it meets, it meets zoning, you're going to have to jump through all the hoops.
How long can you give me? I mean, I need, I need a face.
We can't give him any time.
We, it's between you and the city planning staff, and we can't give you a timeline?
It's not between the planning staff.
Well, and then, if I'm hearing him right, he's wanting a portable building, but y'all might explain to him that that's not going to work for occupancy, and they can tell you the reasons behind.
A portable building won't work?
No.
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Per city ordinance, they cannot live in an accessory structure. So the only way you could have them live at your location is to either be in your house or, that, well, let's say it, in your house.
Or add on to their house.
Right, but it's still in the house. You can add on, you can do whatever to the existing, the house structure, but you cannot have accessory structures that people live in.
So a portable building won't work?
Correct.
There are places, sir.
So what I'm going to have to do here is take these two people and hand them off to one of them.
Well, there are places you can contact, like Red Rock.
The chief of police is sitting right behind you, and we have a homeless outreach program here in the city of Midwest City, and I'm sure that he can get you hooked up with one of our officers that handles that and give them the appropriate help that they need.
Okay.
So I think a motion to deny the. Motion to deny.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Anyone in the audience care to, this is a public hearing. Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, the motion carries. Next item in discussion.
This is PC 1980, discussion consideration of amending ordinance number 3353 pertaining to the medical marijuana to correct an error regarding the use chart. Billy?
Yes, sir. This is just a simple fixing a scribbler's error on the zoning charts and in a rush to get this through. I think it was just an oversight on staff, and I'm glad we caught it and able to bring it back to you.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, the motion carries. Next item.
This is PC 1987, public hearing with discussion consideration of an ordinance to redistrict from I-1 Light Industrial to SBUD, simplified plan unit development governed by the I-1 Light Industrial District in a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan to classify the parcel as industrial for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of Section 29 Township 12 North Range 2 West located at 1101 North Sooner Road. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. As you stated, this is a, to fix a zoning issue with the property was recently annexed into the city of Midwest City back in the summer of 2018. Basically, the city has the one year in order to, to assign the appropriate zoning. During that time, there was a liquor store application made to go in there, and that was not permitted in the existing SBUD. And so staff is bringing it back through to correct that zoning, to allow that to go in. Recommend approval.
Any further discussion?
This is public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience have anything to bring before council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, the motion carries. Next item.
This is discussion consideration of passing an ordinance amending the Midwest City Code, Chapter 24, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Administration and Enforcement, amending Section 24-44A 8 and 9, adding 24-44A 10, and deleting 24-44B, amending Section 24-44.1, and providing for repealer and severability. Madam City Attorney?
This is simply bringing our ordinances into compliance with state statutes where when a temporary tag has been altered, the vehicle can be towed, or if the security insurance is no longer valid, or the officer can run the check and determine that there is no insurance on the vehicle likewise under state statute, they have the ability to tow the vehicle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, the motion carries. Next item.
Discussion consideration of passing an ordinance amending the Midwest City Code, Chapter 28, Offenses, miscellaneous Article 4, Offenses Against Property, Section 28-57.1, and Chapter 1, General Provision, Section 1-15, and Providing for repealer and severability.
This is also bringing our ordinances into compliance with state statutes. It fills a gap that Oklahoma State Statute Title 21, Section 1541.1 and Section 1541.3 listed a misdemeanor of false checks as less than 1,000, but currently, the ordinance only allowed for charges to be pressed for individuals who presented a false check for 500. So this changes the ordinance in Section B of 28-57.1 to include a misdemeanor of multiple false checks up to the aggregate value less than 2,000, to also address passing false checks for up to $1,000, and also address increasing the fines in Midwest City Ordinance 1-15 to comply with the state maximum fine for a single false check of 500, and add a fine for multiple false checks of 750.
Any further discussion or questions of the City Attorney? Chair to entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, the motion carries. Next item.
Discussion consideration of passing and approving an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Garbage and Refuge by amending Article 1 in general by adding Section 18-9 Bulk Waste Collection, and amending Article 2 Municipal Collection Disposal Services, Section 18-22C, City to Furnish Service, Section 18-25B, and 18-25F, Container Required Duty to Use, Section 18-27A Residential Service Fees, Special Provisions for Mobile Home Parks, Section 18-28 Business and Commercial Service Fees, Section 18-31 Special Charge for Restoration of Service to Commercial Establishments, and Providing for repealer and severability. This has been on the agenda previously. Mr. Sullivan?
Mayor and Council, thank you so much for your leadership in getting us to the point where we are on this ordinance tonight. We started this process back in the summer of last year, and there have been multiple delays for a variety of very good reasons. But I wanted to begin tonight to acknowledge the two gentlemen who have done the bulk of the work on what you see before you, and many of you had input into this process as well, including a significant amount of assistance from Claudia Deakins with some questionnaires that she helped to develop and put out for us. But Robert Paul Streets, we know him as Paul, all of us, and Matt, his sidekick, have worked tirelessly. You know, Matt Faulkner, some of you on this horseshoe probably believe that nothing good can come from Stillwater, Oklahoma, but I'm telling you right, I know, sir.
Not me.
But I'm telling you right now, we snagged a good one from Stillwater, Oklahoma.
I don't have an issue.
But these two gentlemen, I cannot imagine the amount of hours these two gentlemen have put into what you see before you tonight. I'm going to let them give you the technical assistance that you need to help you with your questions and hopefully get us through the process successfully. So thank you for your consideration.
Is there any questions on this? Mr. Street, you want to come up and give your two cents?
Paul has three cents to give.
Three what?
Three cents.
There you go, at least three cents. I want to thank you all for the time and the opportunity to review this and this discussion item specifically, and welcome any questions. I also want to thank Vaughn. He's provided a lot of support along with our leadership. Sarah had a big hand, along with Heather, in the review of the ordinance that you're looking at, and I think it'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. And obviously Guy, Mayor Dukes, Tim, who's not here, all gave a lot, provided a lot of feedback, and especially want to echo Vaughn's sentiments about Matt. Matt has gone through at least 100 iterations of various requests about how to calculate what we're going to do, what are we trying to represent. So understand that what you're looking at, even if it appears to be brief, has had a lot of effort in order to try to put together the numbers that appropriately represent the costs for us to provide service for both commercial and residential customers. So with that said, I'll stand back from the mic and welcome any questions, and welcome Matt to come up and help answer any questions if we have them.
I have one, one big one, and it's, this is, this is going to be, and I realize that it's going to be pickup at the curb instead of driving it to the transfer center.
Correct.
Is there, have you, have you looked at keeping the transfer center open one Saturday a month? And if, if that was possible, what would be the overall cost of the city to do it? Is it even feasible?
We did evaluate that actually with some effort from both Susan down at Customer Service, and Sarah, and Matt. We looked at the number of customers that we provided service to at the transfer station over 2018 calendar year, and then made some evaluations and assumptions about how many might use the transfer station if we only opened it up one Saturday a month, because that had come up before. And we believe, Matt believes, that based upon what we know and some industry standards, that we'd see about 60, 66% of what we currently take on the weekend, we think would probably show up on a Saturday if we opened once a month, because there are a number of people that would like to have that available to them. And so even though you think, well, maybe it's only a fourth, if you're only open one Saturday a month, if there were four Saturdays in a month, unfortunately, the likelihood is we would get a lot more than just 25% of the material. And if we were to continue to operate the transfer station on Saturdays, we would need to make a pretty significant capital investment that's not currently budgeted, somewhere around $388,000 to buy equipment that needs to be replaced, and that is a recommendation by our fleet manager, Craig Davis, and Matthew Faulkner, the sanitation manager. The reality is, the equipment we're using is anywhere from five to 15 years outside its normal operational window. There were some decisions made previously about using the transfer station, and they were not allowed to make the capital expenditures needed to maintain that service and to support it with the resources that we needed. And so we have a lot of equipment that frankly needs to be replaced, and for us to continue to provide that service, whether once a month or four times a month, would require nearly a $400,000 investment to buy equipment just to replace what we need to continue to provide that service.
How is this four times a year going to work at the street?
Actually, we're going to, if you don't mind, I'd like for Matt to pass out a map. We drew a map up. We figured this would come up in a pop quiz. So we, Matt did a little, made a little effort to get this put together, and by the way, I need to give some credit, although he's not here, Greg Hackman and Kelby, who actually works for Greg, actually helped put together the map for us so that you all had something to look at. And we printed it in large scale, so it was a little easier to see. Our hope, if you'll notice in the ordinance, the, we set forth that it should not be placed at the curb any more than five days before the week that it gets picked up. We expect to start pickups, as you'll see, on Monday of a week, which means that they can't set it out any earlier than Wednesday the previous week. The goal or expectation was to make sure that we did not have material at the curb longer than 10 days. Our hope is that a maximum of 10 days is what we'd see in terms of stuff at the curb in any one given area. If you notice on that map, it's specifically lined out based upon arterial boundaries so that it's very easy to determine who should and shouldn't have it out for the customer. And then there are dates that are allowed for them four times a year to have the material at the curb. We also, actually Matt took the time to go ahead and exclude certain weeks. We did not, we excluded the week of Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's, July 4th. To make sure that we did not try to pick up materials or schedule stuff when we had holidays that were observed by not only the Solid Waste Department but the city. So what you see in front of us, what you see in front of you is what we hope to be able to execute, provided that the participation is not overwhelming. So we obviously had to make some assumptions, and we talked to many people in the, in the industry, not only local, private sector and public sector. Matt's reached out to at least four different cities. We've looked at the way that it's being done elsewhere, whether it be monthly, once a year, twice a year, and no one's doing four times a year. We feel like based upon the investment that we're recommending, and the personnel that we're recommending to hire, that we can provide this service, provided there's an appropriate level of participation. I think there'll be a learning curve, to be perfectly honest. Like, we're going to have some, there'll be a little bit of a battle with regard to the number of people that set stuff out, and then obviously when they set it out, and it's going to require some effort, not only from our department, from other departments for the sake of education. Also, what's important to consider when we're talking about bulk waste specifically, is that we would not recommend picking up the material until January 1st, 2020. The reason is because there's a lead time for the equipment that's necessary to do the work, and we have to build a fund balance in order to buy or appropriate the equipment. It also gives us the very necessary time to visit and develop appropriate procedures and ordinances to deal with how and when we might regulate what material's set at the curb, how early and how long it can be there. This is a concern not only that Mayor Dukes brought to our attention, but Guy Henson, Tim, Sarah, Mike Stroh, and obviously Pat Byrne. We've talked to a few people that said, hey, how are you going to keep this, and Susan needs, how long are you going to keep this stuff at the curb? So that's why we've set a firm position with regard to how soon it can be put out, with an expectation of how long it will take us to get it picked up, and then an opportunity for the next six to seven months to develop appropriate regulatory language to help manage the educational process for our customers.
There's nothing, we still, people still need to realize that there's still another mechanism that they can take their stuff to, right?
Correct. The landfill, it's a part of our contract for the next five years. They can take material to the landfill and, and pay a reduced cost, our contracted cost.
And also the, the tree clippings, and I want to, I went out there this weekend, and you actually had somebody volunteer, one of your staff members volunteered from the waste, from the water, or the wastewater, because he knew, he didn't know who I was when he was talking to him. I asked him questions, and he said that he had, he knew they were going to be busy that day, so he volunteered to work that day.
Yeah.
Which was, in the times that I've been out there, it's been exceptional.
But isn't there another option that you've used, you're not in your window, in your zone, you can call, still put your stuff up to the curb?
Correct.
And pay $50 per half hour or whatever it is?
$55 a half hour, that's correct.
So there is that other mechanism too, that if you have a big trash day for yourself, you can call. Last time I did it, there was like a two-week lag time?
Yes.
Where you said, okay, we will be out on these days, and gave two weeks notice.
Yes.
Which gave my neighbors about five days to throw their stuff.
Yes, and we'll, and we propose that the transfer station would remain in operation until the end of this calendar year, 2019, so that we can continue to provide a service and then start, if you all deem fit, and based upon the response from our customers, that seems to be the expectation, we would start providing bulk waste in the beginning of calendar year 2020.
Are we going to send letters out in the water bills like we do a lot of times to, to notify and help get the word out?
I believe that's, that would be something we would recommend.
There's a multifaceted educational process that Claudia's been working on to get the word out, and it is going to be a cultural change for our citizens, but you guys have done a phenomenal job putting this together. This just started out with a conversation.
And if we pass this, since this is an enterprise fund, which theoretically is a business, that we can't lose money on, this keeps us healthy where we can fund what we need for many years to come. Is that correct?
Correct. So, what you'll see, I think it's important to point out that the recycling is the, the actual cost of picking up trash isn't going up. What we're recommending is that we charge what's appropriate to, to deliver the recycling services, which is a contracted service. We did not increase, we typically on an annual basis increase, because our contract requires a 3%, two and a half to 3% bump. We did not get that last year, which means we've been operating for nearly a year without recovering the additional cost of the new contract. So, what we have done is placed the cost associated with July 2019, their contracted cost, in the ordinance. And so, if we get that passed, that will help us continue to, to build the appropriate fund balance to pay the cost of service associated with recycling. There is a change in the commercial contracting, contracts as well. If you look at the costs associated with those, that fee structure, that, that, the table that's in there, there's a change in what we're doing in terms of the commercial. We're eliminating some services that we don't, that have been there for a time that we don't have a lot of use. We found some ways to be a little more efficient and we're matching up what's appropriate based upon our cities in the area. Right now, we're trying to provide services and the, the way that the fees are structured are not equitable. So, we're building some equity into the, the fee structures, and this would allow us to provide that service without, for at least the next four or five years, with, we hope, the only increase being CPI, which is built into the ordinance as recommended.
I'd just like to thank you, Paul, Matt, Vaughn, the mayor, who I've had multiple conversations about this issue with, because I've had a lot of constituents who have been advocating to get bulk pickup at the curb. It's very important to them. They don't have the vehicles to transport to the transfer station. Claudia did a yeoman's task, tried to gather the data to figure out what our citizenry wanted and came up with the data for that. So, I just wanted to thank everyone for all their efforts in this, and I think that it'll be a good project. I, I do understand we're going to have growing pains with the implementation of it, but, and if we're going to maybe publicize this chart that Matt did, we might want to change it to bulk somewhere before everybody thinks that we're going to, uh, last minute.
This was strictly for the purposes of illustrating. Actually, there were some, some smarter people than I that recommended, said, you know what, maybe we ought to give them an illustration of what that looks like, so that there are no's guessing. And actually, Tim had asked that, Vaughn, Matt. So, yeah, we, I, obviously the labels will be, it'll go through a process to make sure that it represents what the citizens need in order, honestly, I think sometimes it's difficult as a customer. You get a piece of paper, whether you receive it or you go to the website, sometimes it's, you, you feel like you need a translator, you know, to read what it is. So, our goal would be to make sure that what's, what's available to the customer is easy to understand. It, obviously, whatever we do, there's going to be some folks that have a hard time understanding it. We'll do our best to educate. Matt has great staff and does a great job communicating what's expected.
Quick question. Yeah, and sorry if I missed it. The, the cost on the bulk pickup, and you're saying how often?
Four times a year.
Four times a year, and what's the cost associated?
There'll be $1 added to every residential customer's bill to pay for that.
$1 per month?
Per month.
And then, and I'm, the part, I think we've mentioned it in a few other meetings, but, you know, the part that worries me is just the nails, the screws, and, and, you know, if you've seen what all goes into the bulk over there, you know, it's, I think you're going to see a little more dumping on private property, commercial, business dumpsters, city property, flat tires from screws, nails, all the stuff that goes into this bulk pickup. So, that's, you know, hopefully that's, you know, I'm way off there, but...
Well, you know, there is obviously, there's always a risk that what gets put at the curb could drug in, could get drug into the street. And we'll tell you that, the way we handle special pickups now, if anybody's had a special pickup, I think they would probably attest to the fact that when we go out to pick that up, they rake it, they sweep the curb line, everything that was set out, if there was anything, is picked up. We do the best we can to make sure that there are no foreign objects in the roadway that could cause a problem with equipment or cars. It's obviously, it's not ideal, you know, if somebody's dragging that. If it's not us, for instance, somebody comes by to try to drag stuff out of that pile, as Mike likes to call them junkers, there is the possibility, obviously, because once it's set at the curb, nobody's going to control whether somebody comes by to take the dishwasher that's set out or what have you. Those are the kind of things that we don't have a tremendous level of control over, and we're going to do our best that when we come in, it will be, look like it did before they set any of the, the bulk waste out.
Okay, thanks. And then also, so the, the dollar per month per resident, and then the additional cost to, for trucks and the equipment versus continuing at the...
Transfer station.
Transfer station. What is that cost difference as far as equipment that we're going to have to buy versus updating what's there?
Well, you know, Jeff, there's, so there's a lot of equipment. The biggest cost actually is not necessarily the equipment. The biggest investment would, would be what we'd have to spend on the transfer station. So, there's some money currently being earmarked in the, as far as the, the utility bill is concerned, when somebody pays their trash bill, a certain part of that, which you remember on the Solid Waste Committee Review Committee, because I believe you made the motion, we set aside a certain amount of money in order to help fund rebuilding the transfer station when we felt like that might need to happen. What would happen now is, instead of sending that money that's associated with the transfer station rebuild, what would be diverted back into the operational cost, which is why there's not an increase on the residential trash. In other words, what we would do is use that to help fund the costs associated with the services that we currently provide. And then the dollar a month would help buy the equipment with the appropriate recapitalization for the equipment needed to execute those services. The price that's related to the transfer station frankly would need an engineer to, to make a determination about that cost. Patrick and I have sat down, we've had some discussions, talked to the city of Norman. There, it would require a lot of money and a complete change in all of the equipment, which could be, Matt, do you have an estimate on what the total replacement cost of all the equipment is? Is it around a million dollars?
A million five.
A million five to replace existing equipment there. Obviously, we're not going to generate that kind of money, you know, with a dollar a month. So, just the cost of the investment, not to mention what it would take to rebuild the transfer station, is a pretty big number. Does that help answer that question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, I'm sure it's complicated, but it just, it's still surprising that you have the labor of people taking their own trash and dumping it at the transfer station. I know you used to have labor involved in manning that versus all the labor going out to pick each dump up.
And here's the tough part. So, Jeff, we don't currently, right now, we never budgeted to provide those transfer station services. In other words, we're paying that out of the residential trash operations cost, that cost is being absorbed. So, what this does is it takes the burden of, of costing that out and putting it on the customer that gets the service, rather than, you know, taking and dealing with that cost and trying to spread it out and defray that cost among the other services that we provide.
For a call, for a vote, I would like to, I forget, whether it was you or Vaughn sent out an extremely good article about the broken recycling system?
Vaughn did.
If you can give permission, to copyright permission, or whoever wrote that article, to send it out to all of our customers, or a synopsis of that, that would be nice. Because there was an excellent explanation of just how broken the recycling system is, and it would be good for everybody to read that. Whether they would or not, I don't know, but it was a good article.
So, long as you attribute it as for public uses for education, you, and you attribute, you don't have to get copyright permission, do you?
I think we could put a link to it, Mayor, on, on social media without too much fear of...
It was written as an article.
It was, it was, there was also an additional one this last weekend on MSN's landing page, very similar article, almost identical information. It's, it's beginning to hit the mainstream media now that, that there's, there are some serious issues with recycling worldwide.
And if you remember, actually, Republic Services and Midwest City, we made an effort back in 2017 to try to deal with some of the issues, plastic bags specifically, and obviously trying to deal with some of those commodities and how we manage them. So, honestly, our customers, according to Republic, are doing a pretty good job. We can always improve. So, the good news is, if we get on top of it, press that information out to the public, they're going to, they're going to, it'll help them, help them make informed decisions.
That being said, if there's no further discussion on this current item, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Go into our next item.
Thanks, Robert.
This is TS 435, discussion consideration of a request to change the speed limit from 45 to 40 miles an hour for Douglas Polvart from Southeast 29th Street to Reno Avenue. You have the staff report in front of you with a positive recommendation from the staff. Action is at your discretion.
There's no discussion. Chair, entertain a motion.
He's, he's actually here for another item, but he's, he certainly is more than welcome to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. In your packet, you've got my letter that basically supports the change in the speed limit from 45 to 40. Obviously, Vaughn Sullivan had submitted a memo indicating it's dangerous for the city employees to be in that area. We've noticed a heavy amount of traffic, business and motor vehicle related, over 120 egress-ingress locations at the, at that section from Reno to Southeast 29th. We try to do selective traffic enforcement in the area, it's just too dangerous for officers to do it. This is no, no reasonable way for us to get out there and do that at this point. So, from a police farmer's standpoint, we're recommending that you lower the speed limit from 45 to 40.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item?
This is discussion consideration of passing and approving an ordinance amending the Midwest City Municipal Code, Chapter 8, Animal Shelter Operation by adding Section 163, animal fee waiver events, providing for repeal or subservability and declaring an emergency. And the chief is here to speak with the council on this.
Honorable mayor and council, I'm not as excited as bulk trash, but I do want to talk a little bit about this important endeavor. Actually, accolades go to the councilwoman Eads. She, she's an animal lover like many of you on the council and myself. She has seen our passionate pleas on Facebook and social media that when our animal shelter is full, we need people to come adopt, because our only option is euthanization. And what's happened is, is that the ordinance does not allow for myself or the city manager or the mayor and council to waive those fees that are associated with adoptions, which is $45 for sterilization and also for the, the shots that are given to the animals. So, Ms. Eads approached us, and at that point, to myself and Mr. Henson and Heather Poole, conference together, we came up with some language that in, in turn, Joanne Horn, our city prosecutor, has provided in ordinance that would allow us, that if it becomes a situation where it's an emergency, we've utilized all our resources, rescue groups, special breeds that are out there for adoption, we can't get rid of the animals and now we have to euthanize. It gives me the ability, once the animal shelter supervisor calls me, says we're at capacity, we need to waive the adoption fee for 48 hours, and I contact Mr. Henson, and that goes into, to a process where for 48 hours, we'll advertise through our communications director, Claudia Deacons, and say that please come and adopt these animals. We'll waive the fee, and we also have a mechanism in, in support of our veterinarians who actually do the spade and neuter. So, we think it's a win-win solution for us, because we do multiple times throughout the year, request citizens to come do adoptions. And so, we can't do it without your authorization. So, again, thank you, Ms. Eads, for bringing that to our attention, and thank you, Heather, and your staff, for making this a real agenda item for us to consider today. So, does anybody have any questions?
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank everyone who participated in this project. I did ask for this, and I do fully support this, and I asked for the council's support.
Good job.
Thank you.
That being said, entertain a motion approved.
Motion approved.
And a motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Now, we do have...
Motion to approve on emergency basis, the last agenda item.
I have a motion to declare an emergency.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you, guys, for your hard work on that. And go into the next item of discussion.
This is discussion consideration of one, reappointing Jim McWhorter to the builder's advisory board for an additional three-year term, and appointing a replacement for Tom So, if you don't have anyone you would recommend to replace Tom Jordan, you could make an, a, an appointment of Mr. McWhorter, and then we can bring the replacement item back at the next meeting.
Can we, so just let them recommend one, or if we can bring him back?
Okay. So, the chair would entertain a motion on Mr. McWhorter.
Move to approve Mr. McWhorter.
And bring the other...
And secondarily, to bring the other appointment back.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item?
This is discussion consideration of a reappointing Gary Bachman and Nick Time to the Traffic and Safety Commission for additional two-year terms, and appointing a replacement for Kenny Stevenson to the Traffic and Safety Commission. You might want to take the same avenue on this agenda item as well.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, it's been brought to our attention, we knew this, but Mr. Bachman not only serves on this commission, but he also is one of our judges, and we, this council has taken a fairly firm stance on not appointing employees of the city to commissions and boards. So, with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion not only to replace Mr. Bachman, but also Mr. Ken, Stevenson, and appoint Nick Timms for another term. And we would have to reach out and find two replacements for Mr. Bachman and Mr. Stevenson.
Is that done by McWhorter, or how's that done?
Actually, it's my appointment, so I would entertain any suggestions.
Motion to approve Mr. Time and to revisit on a subsequent agenda item, the appointment for the other to open positions on the Traffic and Safety Commission.
Second. And a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item?
This is discussion consideration of approving a modification to Phase 2 and Phase 3 of the 2018 General Obligation Bond Proposals Approved by the Voters of Midwest City on August 28th, 2018. Mr. Nito?
Thank you, Mr. Henson, and thank you, council, and appreciate the opportunity to stand before you again. Before I get to that particular item on the agenda, though, I just, I want to, oh, it's a corny term, shout out. We had a very good discussion rating call with Standard and Poor's on our contemplated revenue issue for the expansion. And I want to give kudos to Guy and to, to Christie, she's over there hiding. They did, they do an amazing job, and it really goes a long ways. When you have, a lot of times, those professionals that are out of state, they don't look highly on Oklahoma's sophistication or lack thereof, but they really do an amazing job. They've done it several times. They have the answers, they have the expertise, and they don't leave them hanging. They don't stutter or stammer. They do a phenomenal job. It's relating your financial position and also just the general overall status of the city. So, I wanted to say that first. The next thing on this item, we had such good luck with our interest rates on the last issue, and we reran the numbers. We anticipated issuing an additional $12 million to be delivered in sometime in June under the, the original plan. Keeping under our 10 mil cap, we anticipate that we can now issue up, up right at 17 million, because the interest rates are lower on the outstanding ones, and we anticipate a lower interest rate on these also than we had projected. So, that's the, Guy wanted to come back and, and present that to you, that it won't delay the next series. We still should be just in line, and we'll monitor that as far as the, getting to the balance of the full issuance of the bonds over the next timely matter. getting to the balance of the full issuance of the bonds over the next timely matter. But this way, we can go ahead and get an additional $5 million, approximately an additional $5 million than we had anticipated. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have, or Guy, if you wish to make any comments.
Well, I would just add, what, in looking at the Phase 3 pieces to the bond issue, we felt that the, moving up the booster station renovation project would be an appropriate way to address that issue. So our, that's our recommendation to move the booster station from Phase 3 to Phase 2.
So Greg, I hope that you do as well on this one as you did the last one. I had a client in my office that has about $400,000 a year in tax-exempt interest in bonds. He wasn't really happy because he is only looking at buying bonds that will yield 4% and Midwest City came in lower than that, and he refused to buy them, and he said, I've bought bonds every time that Midwest City comes up because they always pay. So you did such a good job, you got somebody mad at you.
Well, and it's, it's a rough problem to have that you're only going to generate about $400,000 in tax-exempt income. So you guys are my clients, he's yours. So I'll be glad to answer any other questions.
With that being said, is any further discussions or questions for Mr. Nito?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just a clarification question. Move to approve.
I've got a motion.
Second.
And I got a second.
Do roll call, too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mrs. City Clerk.
Ward 1, aye. 2.
Aye.
3. Aye. 4.
Aye.
5. Aye. 6.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the public discussion, new business portion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned, and I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have a consent agenda, these items are placed on the consent agenda so that the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all the trustees or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, be removed and heard in regular order.
I would like to remove 2 so we can have discussion. I think Guy deserves a little bit of more than just a roll call though on what's a very important.
Mike control?
Mike control, please.
I hate these things.
Thank you very much.
I want to pull 2 to have open discussion because I think Guy's 40, almost 40 years in the city deserves a little bit more than just us saying yea or nay real quick.
Item 2 be removed, and I would entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Item 2, discussion and consideration of accepting the resignation agreement between the Midwest City Municipal Authority and the city manager, Guy Henson. And since you pulled it, you get the lead off.
It means I have to talk into this thing. So I've known Guy for about 30 years, and he's worked here for about 40. He and I have not always seen eye to eye. I've been on committees with, where he was city manager, but he's somebody that I've always known 100% that even if we disagreed, that he had the city's best interest and every single one of the employees in this city's best interest at heart. He's done everything to better this city, and he's given 40 years of his career, and it's been an honor and a privilege on the committees that I've served with you. And to be on the council when you do retire, I'm not calling it a resignation, I still want to call it retirement. And I know that we'll see each other outside, but it's going to be different on June 12th. Thank you for your time, Guy.
Well, I guess the mayor ought to have to say something, right? And the reason I'm doing this is because of the reaction I'm getting, but I do have to mirror Sean's comments. Having been an employee of the city of Midwest City for 31 years myself, it takes a toll on you. And we've created a lot of gray hair for him in three years, this current group of folks. But every time, and I say this all sincerity, anytime we brought up an issue, we came to you, you took it to stride, you appointed the correct people to take the appropriate action, and again, like Sean said, we didn't always agree, but it's not about us, it's about the citizens of Midwest City, and I say that time and time again. And you've always, if you were going to err, you were always going to err on the side of the citizens and the employees, and I appreciate that attitude. And it's going to be weird, we're going to have to go through some changes, and changes, I heard a Baptist preacher the other day say, you know, changing the Baptist church is hard. Everybody, the only people that are for it are the babies in the nursery needing to be changed, and they're crying about it. So with that being said, we're going to have, we're going to see some changes and, but thank you for your service, and we've still got you for three more months and create some more gray hair for you, so. That being said.
Well, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Henson, the city manager. It's been great working with you, and you have done a lot, and I know Ward 5 really appreciate a lot of work you have done and your participation and your presence you have shown in that ward. So thank you very much, and I just hope you have a great retirement. I don't want to call you resignation either.
So you all caught me off guard with all of these and these comments, and I'm not ready, so thank you very much for your, your support and love. The, I'll have something else to say on June 11th, okay?
We could all go around the table, around the horseshoe, and say wonderful things about you, Guy, but I think we just serve to further embarrass you at this exact moment. So I'm going to forego that and just say I move to approve. This agenda item.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
What would happen if we had noted that? Would he have stayed forever?
He's stuck.
Oh. Can I withdraw that motion? Madam Clerk, I'll just back that up.
With that being said, we now, I can't control, I've never had control. We now move into the new business public discussion of the authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the trustees? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned, and I call to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda, and again, these items are placed on the consent agenda so that the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, be removed and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And a motion, and I have, I've got a second. All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We move into the first discussion item?
This is discussion consideration of accepting the hospital authority's investment performance review for the period ending December 31, 2018, and action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. Mr. Garrels was unable to be here tonight. He reminded me that this was the first meeting in 23 years, that he was not present to provide the quarterly report. So he's obviously done a great job of guiding this asset and reporting to you. I have handed out to you his summary of the quarterly report where he identifies key issues, and you have that in front of you, and I'm not going to, going to make you listen to me read it, so we would recommend acceptance of the quarterly report, and there is no need to change and to reallocate assets or change fund managers.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. And ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business public discussion of the Midwest City Hospital Authority. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we do have an executive session.
This is discussion consideration of one entering into executive session as allowed under 25 OS, Section 307(c) tend to confer on matters pertaining to economic development including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to locate within the city into an open session authorized in the city manager to take action as appropriate based upon the discussion in executive session.
Session?
Move to go into executive session. All in favor, indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, we are now in executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, we will not be coming back to the council chambers, we'll be in executive session. Thank you for being here.